Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. We are actually going to start this evening with a county meeting, so I'm going to turn it over to Chairman McNabb.
Good evening, everyone. The county commissioners in Nantucket for May 1st meeting is now open. Just to remind you all that the commission meeting is being audio and visually recorded. Are there any public comments for the county commission on any issue that's not on the Hearing none, seeing none. We have no new business. We have approval of the minutes from January 31st and approval of payroll and treasury warrants for February, March, and April. Do we hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Brooke is on, so we need to do roll call.
Do roll call. Okay. Tom Dixon.
Aye.
Don Holgate.
Aye.
Brooke Moore.
Aye.
Matt Fee.
Aye.
Chairman says aye. Minutes and warrants are approved. We have one agenda item, the request for approval and extension of a set of complaint to recognize 1975 order of taking of Old South Road and approval registration of subdivision plan of Lot 30 as shown in Land Court Plan Number 16514-G into Lot 1167 and pending Land Court Plan Number 16514-162 for 117 Old South Road.
The real estate specialist is going to take you through this?
I'm sorry.
Tracy McDonald, the real estate specialist, is going to take you through this?
I was looking for.
I'm here. I'm online. So this is a request from Attorney Brian Swain for a plan that his client has petitioned the land court to subdivide into four lots, and one of the lots abuts the county layout of Old South Road. And so the land court requires consent of the select board or the county commissioners to consent to the plan. The town council has reviewed the form of consent and also has reviewed the plan, and so we're recommending that the county commissioners consent to it.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, by roll call. Tom Dixon.
Aye.
Brooke Moore.
Aye.
Don Holgate.
Aye.
Matt Fee.
Aye.
Chairman says aye. That is approved. Do we have any reports from any of the commissioners?
Move adjourned.
Second.
All in favor, by roll call. Tom Dixon.
Aye.
Don Holgate.
Aye.
Don. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Brooke Moore.
Aye.
Matt Fee.
Aye.
Chairman says aye. We are adjourned. Back to the select board.
Thank you. I will call the May 1st Select Board meeting to order at 5:34. We have a few changes to the agenda. We have an additional announcement from Florencia that we'll get to. And under the section Citizens Departmental and Committee Requests and Reports, we are switching number two and number three. Halkene will go first. And numbers six and seven have been postponed until the May 15th meeting. Other than that, we'll accept the agenda as presented. I will note when we do pending contracts, there are two conflicts that have been noted, so we'll take the contract for process first and the contract for the food, fuel, and rental assistance separately than the others. And with that, I will turn it over for announcements.
Just to remind you that this Select Board meeting is being audio and video recorded. And I think Eric has a couple announcements, and then I'll come back.
Thank you. I just wanted to let everybody know about the planning board vacancy. That deadline did come to pass. We had two applications, one from John Kitchener, who is currently a planning board alternate, and one from Hillary Rayport. Per our committee process, we are announcing those names this week and at our next meeting on the 15th. And then the board, along with the remaining members of the planning board, is set to make the appointment at the board's, I mean, at the Select Board's meeting on May 22nd. And the annual committee board commission vacancies is happening right now. We are accepting pretty much all committees. We do have incumbents that are applying, but that doesn't mean that members of the general public can't apply for those seats as well. And I would really encourage people to participate in your local government. It can be challenging, but also really rewarding. And all that information is on the website.
Thank you. Next announcement is about the annual town meeting. The 2024 Annual Town Meeting is Tuesday, May 7, 2024, at 5:00 p.m. at the Nantucket High School in the Mary P. Walker Auditorium at 10 Surfside Road. We have Florencia here to review some informational, information about the warrant, about some town meeting warrant articles.
Thank you, Rick. Good evening, everyone. Yeah, so if you don't mind, I'm just going to share my screen. I am not going to play the videos that we've been putting out in social media. Hopefully, you've seen them. But I just wanted to share how people can find information. It is very simple. This is a town website. If you go to Government, under Town Meetings, we have the 2024 Town Meeting with all information that you might be looking for. Of course, the Voters Guide has been posted this week, so it's available. All the videos that we put out in social media for those articles that are subject to vote at the town election later this month are here as well. There is a new video on resilience district articles, and the tax rate calculators here. Of course, the warrant is available here as well, and the special newsletter that we put out yesterday. So if you haven't read it, just go to the 18 page on the website, or also the main page where you will find all the information. And that was the announcement. Like I said, social media, the Towns Q channel, the Towns website, and you can also email us at communications@nantucket-dashemi dot com if you have any questions, or if you're having trouble finding any information. The other announcement that I had, I'm going to stop sharing my screen, was regarding some comments that we made on Facebook, the Towns Facebook page, regarding the strategic plan survey that we are having out. This type of survey, like we explained before, is a representative kind of survey, so it is being targeted to specific people within all demographics within the town. So it is not open for everybody to take it, but if you're in social media and you see an ad inviting you to take the survey, please do. We will publish the results later on. Someone from Sense City, that is the platform carrying out the survey, will come to the Select Board and explain how we collected information. So there were concerns that we were not sharing the link. We're simply not sharing the link because the purpose of the survey results are to be as representative of the community as possible. But we will have all the information published once the survey is closed, and that's my announcement.
Thank you, Florencia. Next announcement is that there'll be no Select Board meeting on Wednesday, May 8, 2024, due to a possible second evening of town meeting. The next meeting will be held on Wednesday, May 15, 2024. And finally, the annual town election is scheduled for Tuesday, May 21, 2024, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Nantucket High School at 10 Surfside Road.
Thank you, Rick. Are there any opening Select Boards announcements or comments?
Madam Chair, I would just point out that Florencia just pointed out, excuse me, the Voters Guide that's on the Town Meeting page is a very plain language document of what's in the town warrant, and highly recommended for anybody who has any questions on explanations for the warrant articles.
And we'll have hard copies at Town Meeting as well.
Thank you. I don't believe we have any follow-up this evening from prior Select Board meetings. Now we are onto public comment. This is for items that are otherwise not on our agenda for discussion. Topics will be limited to three minutes, and I see someone coming to the mic.
Good evening, Charity Benz. I am here as a public service announcement to let you know as a courtesy that putting in Nantucket Neighborhoods First has taken out a petition for a special town meeting for a new alternative short-term rental article, and I simply wanted to let you know that.
Are there any other public comments this evening? I don't see any hands online.
Good evening, Megan Perry. I just wanted to bring to the board's attention that the Attorney General's Office found an open meeting law violation against the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which is a commission or board that you appoint, and so I think it's fairly important that the Select Board know about it. Additionally, you do have a Select Board member who, at the time, was part of that board that violated the open meeting law complaint, or law, and you currently have a board member on the Affordable Housing Trust. So I just wanted to make sure that that was brought to your attention. It was not on the Select Board's agenda, nor was it on the Affordable Housing Trust meeting agenda just the other day. It is kind of a big deal. And then I don't know if anybody had actually seen the meeting or the meeting minutes which were in question for this. And I apologize that I have to read it off my phone because I only have a screenshot from the FOIA that I had to do to receive that. This is from the April 7, 2023, meeting. The members present were Murphy Bowers, Iverson, Moore, Sherry Sullivan, and staff present was Bogren and Holland. It started at 10:47 a.m. and ended at 10:59, so 12 minutes. And it says Tucker Holland, Housing Director, shared with the board that he will be recommending to the Select Board at their upcoming executive session that the town drop the appeal of the hack decision regarding Surfside Crossing. Mr. Holland stated that the recommendation is based on several factors, including that the developers are now publicly stating that they see the best version of this project as 75% serving year-rounders, that the developer is able to proceed at the risk in his doing so. Redacted information follows. And Mr. Holland shared that he had discussed the recommendations with Town Council and that this agreement, that the only real leverage that existed at one point in its time has effectively expired. Mr. Holland shared that the draft joint statement of principles has been developed with input from the developer, Mr. Sullivan, Andrew Vorse, Mr. Holland, and for the Select Board to review and comment on. Mr. Sullivan, and then further redacted information. Ms. Moore stated she supported the recommendation, and as the Select Board representative of the trust, it would be helpful if the trust would vote on the recommendation so that she could relay the trust's view to the Select Board. Following brief discussion, the motion was made by Mr. Iverson, seconded by Ms. Sherry, and the members present voted unanimously to support the recommendation. I just wanted to point this out because I know the chair said in the current today that it was something to do with Roberts rules. Roberts rules has nothing to do with open meeting law violations, so maybe we need to go over open meeting law violations with various boards. It's also the second open meeting law violation that Mr. Iverson sits on a board for in the last year. It's an easy thing to remedy instead of saying things weren't filed in a timely manner.
You've got five seconds.
Also, it's another time that Town Council has just said
Okay, three minutes.
the complainant did not file within time. So thank you guys very much.
Are there any other public comments this evening? Seeing no hands in the audience and no one online, we'll move on to, there's no new business, approval of minutes and warrants.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, by roll call. Tom Dixon.
Aye.
Matt Fee.
Aye.
Malcolm McNabb.
Aye.
Brooke Moore.
Aye.
Don Holgate, aye. Those carry unanimously. On pending contracts, can we, well, first, are there any questions or comments on any? And can we take them all with the exception of the ones I noted, process first and Nantucket food, fuel, and rental assistance?
A move that we vote all but those two?
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, by roll call. Tom Dixon.
Aye.
Matt Fee.
Aye.
Malcolm McNabb.
Aye.
Brooke Moore.
Aye.
Don Holgate, aye. That carries unanimously. Brooke is recusing from process first, so the remaining four of us, can I have a motion from someone?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, by roll call. Tom Dixon.
Aye.
Matt Fee.
Aye.
Malcolm McNabb.
Aye.
Don Holgate, aye. That carries unanimously.
Next up, Tom is recusing from Nantucket food, fuel, and rental assistance.
Is there a motion from someone else?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, by roll call. Brooke Moore.
Aye.
Matt Fee.
Aye.
Malcolm McNabb.
Aye.
Don Holgate, aye. That carries unanimously. Next up, we have Citizen Departmental Committee Requests and Reports. First up, we have the Finance Department request for approval of general obligation bonds in the amount of $20,610,000 for various municipal purposes, water and sewer projects. I believe there's a motion on the packet.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you'll note, due to a resizing after we had printed this, it actually, the sale was for $20,774. The amount of the bonds that we're going to issue is actually 19.2 million. That delta is statutorily, any premium that we received, we resized the entire issue and pay down certain obligations within the debt issuance for the use of that premium. So the ultimate amount of issuance is 19.2 million. As noted in the AIS, there were 14 bidders, which was one of the most competitive bids that Hilltop has handled recently. The town's total interest cost, which is the way that we measure to be able to rate and competitively analyze the bonds, was 3.137709, which is one of the lowest rates that they've seen in this environment recently. So we're very pleased with the results, and we think that we've made the right choice in issuing this amount of debt, which was able to be issued at this time because the majority of the projects have been completed or very close to proceeding. If we had taken this out for short-term debt, we would have been paying about 3.35 or 4.5 in short-term interest. So we think by locking in this rate now on this debt that it was the right thing to do in this environment. So we're asking for a favorable motion on that, on this, for the award.
Any questions?
Do I have a question? On the packet we received, it said 5% and 4% for various amounts over those years. How does that square with the 3.13?
So the 3.13 is actually taking the coupon rates and netting the premium against the total interest cost to get how we, because otherwise it'd be very difficult to compare the competitive results. So the total interest cost of 3.13 takes the premium that we receive and reduces that from the interest that we'll pay to get the total interest cost for the town.
Okay.
So it's very competitive, and we're pleased with those results.
Is there a motion?
Move approval. Second.
Can, sorry, you need to be a little more specific.
Page 33 of our packet.
Yeah. Move approval of the vote
Vote of the Select Board.
of the Select Board's packet dated May 1, 2024.
Like she'd like, so moved, like she said. I don't sound as intelligent.
All those in favor, by roll call. Tom Dixon.
Aye.
Matt Fee.
Aye.
Malcolm McNabb.
Aye.
Brooke Moore.
Aye.
Don Holgate, aye. Carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, we are skipping to number three, Halkene update on Tacoma Green Six Fairgrounds Road housing project.
Kristy Ferentzler, the municipal housing director. I have here with me Andy Burns from Halkene. This is a project that's been awarded in 2017 for a 64-unit rental development right next door at Six Fairgrounds. And we came to the board with an update in January, and we just wanted to bring Andy back to give a status update as to where the project stands at the moment, to remind the board. This went through an appeal from the neighbors that set back the development of this project and increased the cost of the project more than double. And Halkene has worked to find alternate funding source. The state is heavily involved in this and working to use this project to keep us in safe harbor, which expires on December 11 of this year. So I'm going to hand it over to Andy now.
Thank you, Kristy. Thank you, Kristy, and thank you all the board members.
You can lift that up.
A little bit closer? How about that? Thank you. Basically, you know, we had a meeting, I think, in the end of January when we were looking to put the project on track, and we've been sort of up and down and around and back, and I'm happy to report that I think that we're on track. We've had, you know, some changes, some strengthening, and we're moving forward. I think one of the first things that I wanted to, today, to introduce the board to is that we've got on the Zoom call here today, two of our new partners that are going to be working with us on this project from Civico Development, which is a company that we've been, Halkene has been working with now for about a year, and they are very excited to be working with us on Tacoma and will be shoulder to shoulder with us as we go through this process to get the project closed over the next, you know, it's going to take a while to get it closed. It's complicated. The, as you've probably heard from your housing team here in Nantucket, affordable housing right now is being really impacted by the lack of bond allocation in the state of Massachusetts for tax credits. And we're looking at having a, putting all the pieces of the project together by the end of this fall, yet we're not going to get the final bond allocation until early part of 2025. There's the bond cap, which they call it. There's not enough bond cap to deal with the increased costs that have occurred through the inflation that you've all heard about and the demand for affordable housing throughout the state. Mass Housing, Mass Development, which issue the tax-exempt bonds, do not have sufficient bond cap to allocate to, they say, Mass Housing. We thought we were in line to get credits and the bond cap by the end of the year. We were notified about a month ago that, in fact, they did not have enough bond cap. And we've been working with Kristy and working with Mass Housing and with HLC to figure out how to put the project back on track. And basically, we're going to have a closing in, we're going through all the preparations for a closing this fall, and then we'll have an early start in November, December, with a final closing sometime in the early part of 2025, probably the end of the first quarter is when we will get the second phase and the full phase of the project underway. All the commitments will be in place by our Mass Housing Board meeting in mid-November. And we've worked closely with Mass Housing over the last six weeks to sort of put this agreement together, and Kristy has talked to the attorneys on your side to see how this will work with the schedule in order to accomplish your goals of getting this project built and getting it onto the record as affordable housing. And I think we're on track. So it's generally positive news. We've got a lot of work to do. The team that's on the Zoom call here tonight, you have David Oliveri from Civico, Halkene. You have also Taylor Bearden, I believe, is on the call. He is with Civico, and Jeff Morgan, who is with Halkene and head of asset management at Halkene, and will be working on the project as we go forward over the next number of months. But generally, that's it. It's good news. I think when we talked in January, I wasn't exactly sure how it was going to come together. A little bumpy in that Mass Housing didn't have the bond allocation, but I think we've got to work around, and I think we can get the project underway.
Excellent news.
My fingers, you know, we have a lot of work to do, and we'll, I'm sure we'll be back here to give you a full description later in the year.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
Yeah, comments. I thought we were shooting for December of this year to keep us within, you know, within safe harbor.
Yes.
So that, you know, I'm, I'm just, I'm just going to, I've been really patient, but my intuition has been telling me to drop this two years ago, and so I hope that this does continue and happen, you know, if we're going to vote for it. But when something takes this long and has this many twists and turns, I usually look at it as, you know, something is telling you, you know, not to do it. So if, you know, I hope that this is, actually isn't dragged out any further. We really
You know, we've got, not only do you have the safe harbor issues, but you've also got the, the state has got, you know, a list of projects that they want to fund, and this has got to go forward now. And we are, you know, a month ago, when Mass Housing said that there was no, we weren't in the queue for a closing in 2024, I literally was going, you know, we're done. And yet, working with Mass Housing, working with Kristy, HLC, I think we've got a strategy to get this project done, and we want to move forward. We're excited about it. We spent, obviously, you've been sitting here watching, we spent a lot of money, and we spent a lot of time and energy, and we want to see this project built.
I'm just, I'm just pointing out, anytime I don't listen to my gut, I regret it later. I hope this is one of those where I don't listen to it, and I'm happy. So anyway, thank you.
Any other?
Oh, Brooke?
Yeah, Kristy, can you, can you hear me?
Yes, now I can.
Yeah, there seems to be a little bit of a delay. Kristy, can you explain how we're going to stay in safe harbor despite the fact that the closing on the state financing is moved? I think that is worth clarifying from that.
Absolutely. So typically, when you have low-income housing tax credits, like Tacoma Green does, it's the closing of the financing that triggers the units to be eligible for safe harbor, and that's when they're eligible to be added to our list and keep us in safe harbor. For this project, because the special permit and the time of the Lytec deal were so far apart because of the litigation, it's actually the pulling of the building permits that make the units eligible. So because Halkene will be working to pull the building permits in the fall and do kind of an early development start in October, November, December, the pulling of the building permits prior to December 11 will trigger the units to be eligible and also make the application to keep us in safe harbor. So they can still close in the first quarter as long as those building permits are pulled in December.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Kristy, do we have backup if that, if that something goes awry?
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, well, stay tuned. Thanks.
Thank you.
Kristy, you're up next. Housing Director, Affordable Housing Trust Quarterly Report.
So Erica's going to pull up. Presentation. So I'm here to report on behalf of the Affordable Housing Trust a quarterly update as to things that we've been working on over the last couple of months. Thank you. So some highlights from the past quarter. We awarded two families with closing cost assistance for purchasing deed-restricted homes. We've been continuing to develop a year-round deed restriction pilot program, which I'm going to talk about a little bit more. A lot of advocacy around A lot of advocacy around the Affordable Homes Act, and we plan to visit to Boston with the Cyrus Pierce Middle School civics class that I'll be discussing. And we've been pushing forward with our request for special municipal local preference to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, which is in line with the Select Board's strategic plan to provide municipal housing. So a little bit about the year-round deed restriction pilot program. This is something that the trust has been working with Judy Barrett to develop. Judy's been working with towns all around the Commonwealth to research deed, year-round deed restriction programs. And she's actually been doing research on programs out in Colorado, in California, in Michigan, and has been reporting back as to what's been successful and what are some of the challenges that the other cities and municipalities have seen. So the trust is developing this program that would basically, in essence, provide a cash incentive to give a deed restriction for year-round occupancy. And so in exchange for cash, you would occupy that home, either rental or homeownership, for at least 10 months out of the year. With the affordable housing restriction, this would be looking at families that are making about 240% of area median income or less. What we've been recommended from Judy Barrett is most places around the country see the entry point at the point of sale. And so this cash incentive is used as a down payment assistance to help somebody buy into the market. One of the challenges with the Nantucket market, with the median home price over $3.5 million, is that there's not going to be a lot of homes that we could establish at that market. And so we're also looking at using this program to help existing people that are living in homes purchase a deed restriction on the existing home. So a little bit different than some of the other markets that they're seeing. So at annual town meeting next week, Article 80 has a year-round deed restriction home rule petition. And this will define what the deed restriction is. And it's very similar to what Province Town approved in their home rule petition in 2023, which is being reviewed at the state. Again, this aligns with the Select Board's strategic goal around creating affordable homeownership opportunities. So the Affordable Homes Act, to give you an update on that, this is something that has really been big in our office. We've been working on advocacy efforts around this. We just had Senator Seer here this past Friday to work. He met with all the housing organizations and advocates around the island. To remind everybody, this is Governor Healey's bond bill. So every five years, the state of Massachusetts has to reissue a housing bond bill. And Governor Healey doubled, more than doubled that to a $4.1 billion bond bill. And on top of that included several policy options that are going to expand housing options for the Commonwealth. One of the most significant policy options was the option for a local real estate transfer fee. And this is something that Nantucket has been advocating for and requesting since 2016. So we're really excited to see that included in her bill. The second thing is she set out kind of the foundation for a seasonal community designation. And while it's not fully defined, Senator Seer's office is working on what this might look like. And it might provide more tools for communities like ours that see high fluctuations in our population throughout the year. One thing that we, of course, have been considering is, in a seasonal community designation, is there ways to provide municipal housing? And also, if the real estate transfer fee is ultimately removed from the Affordable Homes Act, could it still be included in a seasonal housing designation? So the bill has made it through a few committees with no changes, and right now is in the House Ways and Means Committee. Ultimately, we have till July 31st to see this pass, and we'd need a special town meeting to opt into some of those policy options. So in coordination with this, we organized a trip with Martha's Vineyard and the Greater Boston Interfaith Organization to go to Boston on April 11th and advocate for affordable housing. We partnered with the Cyrus Pierce Civics Course, and we brought about 30 students from the middle school up to the State House to meet with our representatives and to speak about how housing has impacted their lives. And it was really moving to hear the stories from their perspective. And it really made an impact on our representatives as well. So in relation to that, we do have a home rule petition next week at annual town meeting. It's the same real estate transfer fee proposal language that we've seen the last couple of years. We've included it to kind of reiterate to the state that we are very much in favor of a real estate transfer fee. Okay. So that was advocacy. Moving on to construction and acquisition. So current development projects that are in progress. Habitat for Humanity is constructing six homes for homeownership. They have broke ground right behind us on Wait Drive. And down the street, Richmond Development is working on two projects. They have a rental project of 55 units known as Gooseberry Place, and that's slated for completion by the end of this year. And they have seven homes for homeownership. Six of them will count on our subsidized housing inventory list. And this is in progress with completion again by the end of this year. We just heard from Hall Keane that they're planning on pulling building permits for the 64 units of rental. And lastly, Housing Nantucket is completing their project across the street at 31 Fairgrounds, and that's 22 units of rentals. Those will be starting, will be starting the lottery for those units this week. The status of vacant land development. Last time I was here, we had issued an RFP for the development of 135 and 137 Orange Street. We had received one bid, and unfortunately, we did have to reject that bid. The request for funding was too significant from the town. And so what we've done is work with the finance department. We're working with a consultant on reissuing that RFP and also looking to bundle this RFP with 16 Vesper, 12 and 12R Bartlett's Road, and seven Amelia. Altogether, that's going to be about 66 units of affordable housing. And so when you scale that, we're hoping to get more interest from more developers, and potential state subsidy might be eligible for some of these projects. We still need to work on an RFP for eight White Street. And the trust is hoping that this would be a homeownership opportunity. So it's different from the rental RFPs, and takes a little bit more time for us to put together. The funds that have been distributed this past quarter. We've approved a $3.1 million short-term loan to Richmond Development for the construction of the seven homes for homeownership. Just discussed this. That's in progress and will be completed by the end of this year. And we've approved a $4 million grant to Habitat for Humanity for the construction of six homes for ownership on Wait Drive. And construction has begun on that as well. The trust has established a critical partnership with Bond Counsel and our financial advisors and working with Brian Turbit to really put together a framework of how to assess different grant and loan requests that come before the trust. And that's why I'm really hopeful that reissuing the RFPs gives us, we have a little bit more information on how the town can participate in these development projects and a more clear path forward. So a quick update on our shy list. We are at 5.37% of the 10% state, the state's 10% goal of 618 units on our shy list. To maintain safe harbor, we need to create either 31 units in a calendar year for one year or 62 units for two years of safe harbor. And this would protect us against somebody submitting a request for a 40B development. So this is presented to you last quarter. It just kind of lays out the timing and estimation of things shuffle around, you know, time to time by the updates. But we do project that we'll be adding about 130 units this year between things happening with Tacoma Green and Richmond. And then next year, we're hopeful that projects that will be issuing RFPs either in 2025 or 2026 would be eligible for inclusion on the shy list. We ultimately are trying to get to that number of 618 units. Again, just, that's the state's goal. We know that there's more need on the island. This lays out, this slide lays out the funding, future funding needs for us to maintain safe harbor and reach our 10% and some of the programs for attainable housing. And so we're looking at being able to provide subsidies. As was mentioned earlier, affordable housing projects have significantly increased. There's limited resources at the state, and we're seeing more and more municipalities stepping in to help fund that gap. And so it's just under $45 million that the trust is looking to spend to stay in safe harbor over the next couple of years. And this will be a bonding authorization at town meeting next week that will be using, the trust has received a $6.5 million override, and will be using the cash from that to pay the debt on this, so it wouldn't further produce any more taxes on the tax base.
Can I go back just to the steps to safe harbor? So if 24 hits like you think it may hit with both Tacoma Green and what was the other, the other big one?
Richmond.
Richmond, yeah. If both of those hit, we're at 130. Can we only get credit for up to 62? Do they, what happens to the extra? They don't carry those to another year, do they?
So we can only get the two years of safe harbor, but all of them will be added to our shy list. So we're ultimately getting closer to that 618.
All right. And so do you, do you look at like sequencing them into another? If both of those happen, do you sequence some into the next year to get two years in case some of these others don't? Or how's the, do you consider that?
So we are always trying to time them out, but we also understand the critical need for housing. So we don't want to delay projects. Any other questions? So then just the last slide for things that are coming up. Welcome to, we've been preparing for annual town meeting. I did present to the FinCom on February 22nd an extensive review of all the housing projects the trust has been involved in and where the $84 million that have been approved by the taxpayers to date either have been spent or where we propose spending them. We're also looking at exploring a good landlord tax exemption. We continuously hear from community members who are renting year-round, who kind of want to be provided some sort of cash, a cash assistance or incentive for doing that. And a tax exemption might be a way to thank them for renting year-round. We're also looking at the leased-to-locals program. The pilot program from ACT NOW was presented to the Affordable Housing Trust, and we're just reviewing kind of how the municipality might be able to get involved and looking at how Province Town has just issued a leased-to-locals program through their municipality. Lastly, we're going to continue to work on requesting the approval of a special municipal local preference with the EO HLC so that we could provide more municipal housing for employees. Okay. Next up, we have a request for a taxi cab license legacy transfer of Pirate's Taxi. I believe this meets the normal criteria.
Yeah, I'm, I'll just line this up. So Nancy Shaw's husband, Michael, has passed away. He was the owner of Pirate's Taxi. There is a timeline that you have to meet once somebody passes in order to request the legacy transfer. She has done that within the timeframe and meets the, the criteria that's in the taxi regulations. She'll, of course, have to, you know, go through the process at the police station with fingerprinting and the ownership part. But she meets the criteria for the legacy transfer. And she's here if you have any, I mean, online if you have any questions.
Okay. Anyone have questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the legacy transfer of the license.
Second.
Okay. All those in for by roll call. Tom Dixon?
Aye.
Matt Vey?
Aye.
Malcolm McNabb?
Aye.
Brooke Moore?
Aye.
Don will get aye. That carries unanimously. Next up, we have an appeal of a tree removal denial to the Board of Public Works, 39 Hooper Farm Road.
So we have the appellant, Jim Lehman, in the back. And we also have Dave Shampoo, who is the tree warden. That's going to be reviewing the meeting that, or the hearing that the Tree Advisory Committee held on this matter. This is not a public hearing. It's not a reg, you know, so we just run this as a regular meeting.
One question.
You got to go to the mic, Dave.
Oh, yes, please.
I'd been, I'd been advised to call a meeting to order for the Tree Committee if they're here.
Do you have, do you?
Mary Longacre is online. But if there's just two of you...
Then you don't need to.
You don't, you don't need to call a meeting.
All right. Very good.
Thank you, though.
That's good. Thank you.
Hi.
Go ahead.
I'm Jim Lehman, and I'm here on behalf of Dreadlock Holidays. We're Stubbings. And before I started, I just wanted to quickly just say that, you know, I find that the issues that people are facing, whether it's local or national, but specifically are just so overwhelming, I can't even begin to think about them. There, it's just unbelievable. I, you know, affordable housing, short-term rentals, erosion, rising waters. I'm just, you know, I am grateful for your time and your sacrifices to be here to try and make these decisions on our behalf. You know, it's like doing the right thing is, seems harder and harder. So I appreciate it. Thank you. We bought this house at 39 Hooper Farm Road because, like everybody else who's in business, we have to house people we work with. And we're, this was a great opportunity for us because it checked a number of boxes that, it was a lot that had an existing three-bedroom ranch house on, but it was on a corner, so that it went around the corner on Fourth Way, and we could actually squeeze in two more houses that will house more people. And that's really important for us, you know. So it was, it was a win-win for us. And so we went about it, and we went and we got the approvals. We got the engineer's drawing stamped. We got everything done, and the project, and it was approved. And the one thing that it was conditional on all along was, because you can't back out on Hooper Farm Road anymore. So the conditional was that we needed a three-point turnaround in, on the property. And in order to do that, we have, had to take this tree down. And believe me, we were more than happy about taking this tree down because, as I will outline to you, if you haven't already seen the information, this tree has been an absolute nightmare to us and threatens the very structure. So it was a win-win for us. So we were pretty excited about the whole, the way the whole thing was working out. The thing that really threw me for a loop was, I was playing, I was actually playing golf with the Tree Committee Chairman, and I was sharing my plans, he was, plans for the property with him. And he happened to mention that you can't cut that tree down. And I, you know, I think, you know, it's like he's doing what he does, and that's his job and everything. But that's not really fair to us, to come along four months after the fact and say, oh, by the way, you can't take that tree down. It's like everything on our plan, everything, with everything on that thing, counted on that tree not being there. And given what that tree has done to us, we were well justified in cutting it down. So I feel like that's, again, I talk about doing the right thing and what's fair, and I don't, I don't feel like that's fair. You can't come into the thing four months later and just say, oh, by the way, you know, we're going back to the beginning. You can't, you can't actually do that. It's like, there has to be a better process for, a better sort of template for administrating what is a town tree and what isn't. And, you know, the tree was, is literally 10 feet in front of the front door. And I'm sure that Dave can outline dozens of examples of where he's planted trees 10 feet from the front door. But, you know, from where we were standing, and it's not incumbent on us to do the research on that, on all the trees on the property. The real estate people certainly don't tell you. So there's no reason that we would go and try and find out, you know, what the tree was at. So it completely blindsided us and put us in a bad spot. But anyway, the tree is there, and the issue is that's the, why the tree is there or how it got there isn't the issue anymore. It's what the tree is doing. And not knowing that it was a town tree is a real, is, what is a real problem. So anyway, I will quickly outline what the problems are. The concrete walkway, the tree being 10 feet from the front door, the concrete walkway that leads to the, leads to the front door is completely coming up. The tree's root system is taking the tree, is taking the concrete up off the ground. The tree sits on a three-course high level of shingles. It looks like a volcano coming up out of the ground, and its root system spreads out across more than, like, 2/3 of the front yard. It is also planted, it was also planted less than five feet away from the sewer line, which has been completely compromised at this point. We've had to clear the sewer line five times in the last 10 months. And, you know, and they... And, you know, and they said, at the tree committee meeting, they said, well, you gotta replace the, you gotta replace the sewer line. And it's like, you gotta talk to the town and have them replace the sewer line. And so I talked to the town and they said, well, we don't take any responsibility for sewer line once it's on your property. We only are concerned with the sewer line until it gets to your property. So that, that was a dead end. So, you know, we're stuck with $15,000 of expense clearing a sewer line so people can go to the bathroom in the house, and it's not, and it's, and it's not our tree. You know, it's like, so that's, that's an incredibly frustrating feeling. Like, I don't, I don't know where, you know, the grade of the property is now sloped towards the, literally, right under the house. It will eventually take the front end of the house right up. The root system of the tree goes literally all the way around the corner and dives under the found, under the, it's not a found, it's a crawl space. So, and it will, it threatens the very foundation of the house, and the house will eventually become uninhabitable. We had to replace the landing to the side entrance to the house. And when we took it up, the contractor called us and said, listen, you have to come and see this. These roots are going right under, right under your foundation and they're going, they're going to ruin it. Again, the frustration is, you know, it's not our tree. You know, it's like this, and, and the most frustrating thing about the whole thing is that the tree committee will take no responsibility for anything that the tree does on our property. And, and then on top of that, we can, can't do anything to the tree. We, we're not allowed to take the tree down because, and he, and he gave two reasons, and he repeated them twice, and he said that, one was that it's a healthy tree, which, yeah, great, it's a healthy tree. And the second reason was that he was worried about setting a precedent, that it would set a precedent for people cutting down trees or whatever, so. And it's like, yeah, I understand the precedent thing, but that really doesn't apply here. You know, it's like there's a huge difference between cutting down a tree to improve your view and cutting down a tree to save your house, which is what we're, which is what we're asking to do. Because our house is in a lot of trouble with this tree. So I, I don't really think that that, that, those are really, I don't really feel like those are really great reasons for not cutting down this tree. You know, it's like the, so, and the, you know, that, so the grade under, the grade under the tree, and again, the, you know, the problems are, the problems with the tree are bad enough, but our hands are tied, like, we can't do anything. You know, we, we can't, he takes no responsibility for anything the tree does and then also says you can't cut it down. So it's just going to continue, this is just going to get worse and worse and worse and worse, and it's costing us thousands of dollars. It was 15,000, but all of the gutters, because the tree is so close to the house and the, and all the branches hang over the roof, all the gutters are rotted and had to be replaced. Another $15,000. And you say, and you could say, you could defend yourself and say, well, you know, you should be cleaning your own, you should be cleaning your own gutters. But, you know, the, the verbiage and the, all the information that's in the town bylaws about what the town is supposed to do on behalf of their trees, we did not see, not one sentence of it applies to anything that happened at 35, 39 Hooper Farm Road. We never heard from anyone ever about this tree, not, not a word. We saw now because we threatened, because we told them that we wanted to cut it down, but up in the first, and we haven't owned the house that long, but in the entire time we've owned that house, no one from the town has ever come and identified themselves and said, just so you know, this is a town tree, we're going to prune it, we're going to do, you know, it's like, nothing. And that's not, that's not fair. You know, that's not fair to us. And, and that's my thing, is I'm, I want to be fair and do the right thing. We try to do that for people we work with, people we, people we serve, and people we are in the community with. I pick up litter every day on Broad Street, and I do it because it's the right thing to do. I walk out and I pick up the litter and I do it because it's going to, it's going to set an example. It's like, you know, hopefully other people are going to pick up on this. And all of a sudden, the sheriff's down there and he's picking up litter, and so are the other business owners. And it's like, that's why doing the right thing is so important. And I'm, I'm hoping that in the end, if you just keep doing it and doing it, it's like, one day I'm going to walk out the front door of Stewes and there isn't going to be any, there isn't going to be any trash on the street. You know, so that's, that's what, that's why, that's why it's important to do the right thing. And the right thing is letting us protect our house. I mean, this is our property. And if, if no one can bother to come and tell us that this is their tree, then, you know, that's, that's not really fair. Again, I appreciate your time and your effort. Thanks.
Thank you.
Jim, did you have a compromise that you were proposing?
Oh, I want to say that we have totally, it's in the plan, it's in the plan that I think was distributed. Yeah, we have new, sprayed the property, new trees, you know, we're totally prepared to, you know, the property will be 10 times better than it was, than it isn't.
Thank, thank you. Mary Longacre has her hand up.
Thank you, Don. Mary Longacre, member of the Tree Advisory Committee. And I wanted to correct for the public's benefit and the board's benefit, one of the statements that the appellant made. It, it is the buyer's responsibility to find out about the town tree situation. Massachusetts law is a sort of buyer beware, where it is, is not anyone else's responsibility to tell you that you have a town tree. The town bylaws define what is a town tree. And anyone can ask the town arborist or Dave Shampoo, the town tree warden, to make a determination on their tree, to provide the documentation that it is a town tree. So it's, there is no responsibility for the town to send someone to someone's property and inform them that they have a town tree, that that individual owner has the responsibility to find that information out. It, it's certainly an unfortunate situation when somebody finds out after they've already made other plans, there's no disputing that. But I did want to make sure that that information was corrected. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
I'm here, I, I, I've been hearing from Jim for quite a long time about this. Actually, I went, after we played golf, when we used to play golf together, I, I had a look at the property just after they bought it. And I said, you know, definitely you have, you have one, you have an elm on the property that, that, that was planted by the town. And, and I said, I planted the other one back in about 1983 for the tree program that I ran for Walter Beinecke. It was, it's one, it's one of 800 trees we planted during that period of time. And, and I said, you know, I'm not sure if it's a town tree, but I'll find out. And, and certainly it was. We, it, Roger Geiger took over the list of, of the trees that, that we planted. And Airport is one spot, there's, I could name any number of them that are along Hooper Farm Road that we planted during that, during that time in the 80s. It's, it's got some historical, I think, it's got historical significance, given, given the fact that, that it was a pretty extensive program and the tree is, is, it's, it's, it's very healthy and it, it likes where it is. Now, what I'm thinking, I don't want to, I don't want to see a tree like that cut down. I really don't. But what I'd like to see is maybe a tax abatement for, for Jim and his, and his, and his partner to remedy the, at least the sewer situation there. I think that would be a good trade-off. I can't do much with the roots, you could probably, you know, I mean, it's, it's, it's a foundation, he could, he could jack up that house and, and, and certainly make that into a, a usable cellar, a basement apartment. And I think the, the root systems could be accommodated by that at some point. I think that makes good sense. As far as the turnaround, there's plenty of room in the backyard for, for having a parking area. That, that doesn't, that doesn't cut it with me as far as where, where you've got to have, have parking and a turnaround. There's plenty of room for that. But I, I would emphasize, I don't want to see that tree taken down. It's, and it's healthy.
Question, it seems really close to the house. Was, is that normal that a town tree would be planted that much, like, right in front of somebody's front door?
Well, let me give you some history about that tree planting program that we ran. We ran in, we ran it out in the paper. Anybody could get a free tree if they dug, if they dug their own hole. And, 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 and it had to be anywhere in the public vista, so front yard, basically, or anywhere where you could see it. So Mr. Norton had owned the, the house at that point, chose this particular location because it was, at that time, there was pine trees in front of the house and they've since all died or been cut down, but that's, that was the only spot in the front of the house. And it was no insignificant hole that we required the, the recipient to get. You had to dig like a three, three to four-foot hole, this way, that way. I mean, we gave awards to who, who had the biggest, the biggest planting pit, basically. So at that point, the sewer would have been obvious where, where it was. I mean, he's, he's the one that dug the hole. We just came and planted the tree. Just basically filled it in, never saw a sewer line or anything like that. That sewer line is, is an orangeburg line. I mean, that, that goes back, they don't even use that, that, that anymore. I mean, it's, if that was, if that was a, if that was a PVC pipe, we wouldn't be here tonight.
We were told that it's all been replaced.
Oh, we gotta go through me. Sorry.
Okay. Sorry, excuse me.
Well, I, I don't know, I was going by Buzzy's, I was going by Buzzy's assessment of the problem. There's, there's PVC coming out of the house, but the rest of it to the sewer is, is, is orangeburg.
Oh, go ahead.
That's what I got.
He told me that everything had been replaced in that, that, that plane, that plane is mostly gone.
I can't imagine that.
That's what he told.
I could, I can't imagine that, how you would even get a PVC pipe under that, under that tree. So, I don't know. Maybe.
Erica?
I don't know, that's.
I have a question for Mr. Shampoo, if that's okay? You just said that this was a program that you did for Walter Beinecke. How did that then translate to being a town tree?
I gave Roger, Roger the list.
Who's that?
Roger Geiger, who was the town, oh, I'm sorry. You would know who he is, but Roger Geiger was the town, town arborist at the time. And he, and, and in the meantime, you know, we have a, there's a town bylaws that, that states if the town works on the tree for two or three times, it becomes a town tree, if they maintain, if it's maintained. So Roger did maintain the tree over, through the years, and, and this is, according to Dale, Gary, who's now the town, town arborist, so it, it's, that's how it became a town tree.
I'm assuming this is just much too large to move, even with the big spades?
It would be. I mean, you could, you know, I mean, it would, it's, I mean, we, we've moved trees that, that size, but, you know, it's, it's, it's a big undertaking.
So the tree to the left, sorry, the, the tree to the left, is that when you, that's right on the corner of the street? Is that when?
That is, that was, that was, we actually planted that tree as well, but we were the successful bidders on, on a town planting project.
Yeah, that was, that tree is, it seems to be in the right location, and it doesn't seem to have the root system that this other monster does.
It will, it will, you know, that's an elm.
Yeah, it will be.
Now, I can, I can show you, I mean, I remember looking at a homeowner on, on Orange Street. Now, you talk about roots, I mean, all, all of the trees along Main, Upper Main Street, everywhere, there's, there's less than 10 feet to the, to, to a foundation. I mean, the sidewalks, I mean, it's a, it's a whole thing here, you know? I mean, it's, it's a tree. It grows. So I, I, I mean, I don't know what, you know, it's, I know what I want to see.
Thank you, Jim.
I'm just, you know, I just wanted to say that the, the last thing that we were told, and we were told this most recently by the people who hammered the line and everything, was that, and this is the irony of the whole thing, is that to replace this, any attempt to either replace or repair the sewer line will kill the tree because it would be that invasive to do it. And that actually makes a lot of sense. If you look at the root system of this tree, you can, you can see that. And the, and the last thing I'm going to say, and I'm just going to let it go because it's just too much, there isn't a person in this room that wouldn't cut that tree down if it was on their property, threatening their house the way this, this tree is threatening our house. I mean, this is our, that is our property. That tree is like a guest that's misbehaving badly. And we, and we're not being afforded the opportunity to excuse it. Like, there is no winning with this tree. You know, you, and any, any, doing anything to the house is a, is a huge expense. It's a tree.
Yeah.
It's not a person. It's not fair that the people that live in that house have to wake up every morning and wonder if the toilet is going to work, or if they're going to have toilet paper all over the front yard. And that's happened three times already. So, five times, excuse me, five times. It's not, it's not fair. It's our property, we should be able, you know, it's like, yeah, it sucks that we have to, this tree has to go, but it's, it's an unreasonable amount of damage, and we're offering to mitigate it completely. We'll, the property will look better than it's ever looked. That is not an attractive tree in that front yard.
Okay. Thank you. It's, question, is there a list of where all these trees are located?
What, the ones that we, well, we are working on that.
Okay.
We're, we're, we've talked, we're going to be working with Natural Resources to do the, do the, what is, what's that called? Not GPS, it's locating.
GIS.
Yeah, GIS.
Yeah.
Locating all the trees through, we've got to start on it, but it's, it's just, it's a partial list.
Yeah.
So, but we are, we are working on it and it's, and it's getting there.
So it's, you know, that's where it comes into this whole kind of like buyer beware. Where is the buyer supposed to look? And where is the broker supposed to look before they sell them the property so they preempt this?
Here's, you know, we've had plenty of, we've had plenty of, of, of issues about trees around town, that, you know, it, it comes up all the time. What I find now is I get calls, Dale gets calls, like, I've got a tree on my property. And I mean, I'll go and look at some trees, and I mean, they're asking about just junk, some junk trees, but they're, they also ask about, you know, nice trees like this one, you know? They call first before they, before they dig or remove. I mean, it's, you know, the, I think the press we got about the, the whole, the whole thing on, on York Street, you know, really, you know, turned the corner on, on what's happening with trees in town. You know, you ask. It's, it's easy. I get calls from engineers, architects, landscape designers, I mean, all the time. It's a simple thing, call me.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay. So that's, okay. And, but that it will be available at some point, that it will just, the data will be there where someone can look it up?
You know, there's, 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 there are records, but it's not, it's not something that we are prepared to publish yet.
I mean, I, I kind of feel like there's a little bit of a, a fundamental not, not well-thought-through issue here when this was happening, and it seemed like such a great idea, the town's going to, you know, promote putting all these trees in, that there, there was, it's, it's entirely different when a new tree goes in than when it gets to this situation. And there wasn't any sort of forethought given to what, what's the appropriate placement of these trees so they don't do significant damage in the future. And this one was clearly not well-located.
I've got, yes, I'm sort of along, I'm, I'm agreeing with you, Don, I think that's, but the other issue that I think we're facing is we are taking away trees. But the other issue that I think we're facing is we are taking away trees and green space, replacing them with vehicles. And we're replacing four cars in front of a building, which goes against Build with Nantucket in mind. You're supposed to hide it in the back. So, in this case, you know, they have no choice but to put it on their own property. You know, I think we need to be looking at these streets, you know, holistically. Could those four spaces be assigned to them in front? You know, partly on their property, partly in the town layout. And then we would say, we would be able to keep trees and not have, not turn every yard into a parking yard. You know, we've done it downtown. There's all the gardens and the green space that was downtown when I was a kid. It's all gone. They're all bricked over and, you know, we've got two cars parked up in where those gardens used to be. And so, I think, you know, we've got a lot more curb cuts. And so, I think that this, that issue is now, as we... It used to be you could have one house, then it was two. Now, you can have a tertiary, so this lot's going to have three. And that's going to have how many cars? And so, what the planning board is asking is, we want a minimum, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we said five cars, they need to park five? But how many? So, we've got a whole issue that we aren't really looking ahead on, I don't believe. We aren't saying, what's the right way to handle this density in this area in a way that's going to be good for the neighborhood and good for the homeowners? It's sort of... We're piecemealing it a little bit. And we're not here for that tonight. But I, you know, but I think that that's... You go up and down that street, and you picture all the ones that are kind of suburban style with a small ranch or, you know, et cetera. And picture them as they are further down the street. We're going to end up with very little... It's going to be a very different environment. And if we don't think about planning it and making it look, you know, closer to downtown and follow our traditional pattern, it's going to look like, you know, cars around houses. And I don't think people come to Nantucket to look at cars parked around houses. So, I think we've got a bigger issue that we're not going to solve tonight. But I think when I looked at those maps, when I looked at the plans, I thought, what are we doing? You know, what are we doing? So, if we are going to have that parking area, I guess the question for Jim is, are they shielding the parking area in any way? You know, there are some along that road that are shielded, so you don't see them? Or is it going to be, you know? And if you had two trees, where would you put them? You know, if you're replacing this big one with two, is one where the old driveway is that's coming out? And one would be the other side of the house, I'm assuming?
Yeah, I think on both sides.
Jim, I need you on camera.
I kind of look at the picture. I think I know where they would go, but...
Right. I think on either side of the existing walkway now.
And not as close to the house? Yeah. Like closer to the fence, up close with this, where some of the tree is? Okay.
And is there some kind of screening along the roadside that's planned?
I don't have... I haven't... I've seen the plan, but I don't have it with me. And I don't know what it shows. But there was a split rail fence along the roadway. But that is kind of deteriorated and would either, would have to be replaced. And then we would probably, yeah.
Do plantings in front of it or behind it?
No, we're wide open to mitigating the loss of, you know...
No, I mean, I understand what Matt's saying is you're going to end up with a situation where your cars are going to be highly visible if you don't have some screening in front of them. It would definitely look nicer. But I mean, I also, I think that this whole plan is a really good example of putting three cottages on a property and providing employee housing for a year-round business. And I think that the placement of this big, healthy, wonderful tree is really unfortunate.
Yeah. Madam Chair, I think, if I may speak, I think Matt's issues are absolutely on target, but we're not going to solve those tonight. We have to deal with what we have here. And I certainly... My vacation this year, I'm going to be in the woods for most of it. And I love trees, and I don't want to see a tree down, particularly on this island, for all the reasons that Matt said. But, I mean, we have potential public health issue here where this house at some point is not going to be habitable.
I was hoping you were going to put that hat on.
So, to me, it's a tree versus human issue here. And I'm sorry the humans are going to have to win.
Tom or Brooke?
Yeah, thanks, Don. I spent a fair amount of time walking this lot with the homeowner. And I think the conclusion that I drew is it's one thing for someone to come to us and ask to take down a tree to build a new house. It's another thing for a tree to encroach in the way that this tree is encroaching. And the idea that we would force someone to spend $100,000 to raise their house above some tree roots just goes beyond common sense in my mind. I think I'm willing to accept that this was a poor placement of a town tree and that we shouldn't do it again. And I, you know, I worry about precedent, but I just think this tree is literally choking the foundation of this house. The roots wrap all the way around the corner of the house like snakes. It's really quite impressive and damaging. And I would be inclined to make an exception for this tree with a mitigation plan.
Madam Chair, just to follow up what you said. I'm not worried about precedent because this is a very, very specific situation. And as someone said before, it's not like changing a tree to build a new house. This is something very specific, just encroaching on people's lives.
Tom?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I agree with Malcolm's comments. And anecdotally, I grew up in 1735 House, Farmhouse. We had many huge trees with giant root systems. I take no, absolutely no pleasure or whatever in allow, or voting to allow the removal of this tree. And I would also state that in the town tree designation that's in our packet 132-2, the tree warden and the tree advisory committee followed every, the criteria has been met. It seems, it seems all due diligence was met. I'm sorry that you guys had a, cannot, can't play golf, at least at the moment. I hope that gets patched up. I agree with Malcolm's, or my colleague's comments that this isn't, this is a particular case. And I would hope that this is not precedent setting, but it's specific to the conditions of this property.
Brooke, did you have your hand up again, or was it still up?
I forgot to take it down.
Okay. There is definitely a delay.
Yeah, she's like...
Matt?
Can I? Yeah, I'm asking Erica to put up page 86, so just so the public can see. And my concern, you know, I'm fine with the tree going down. What I'm not kind of, not fine with is I think we're setting the precedent, the bad precedent we're setting is four stacked cars in front of the house. That doesn't make any sense, any planning sense in the world to me.
That's not a precedent you're making, though. That came out of a different board and a different decision.
Understood.
You might not like it, but it's not really in your purview to change that.
It's not in our purview to change it, but I have the bully pulpit. And I'm able to say that when we do something dumb, and we aren't following Build with Nantucket in mind, and we aren't following, you know, the right, doing the right thing, and we're going to do something wrong that's going to, you know, going to be precedent for the rest of the houses there as we densify, I think it's important that someone says it. The emperor has no clothes. The emperor has no clothes. You know, so I think that that's, that is what concerns me. The tree honestly doesn't concern me. The, you know, what we're doing to fit them in here does. You know, and the thing that I complain about downtown is now moving outward. I have employee, I want the employee housing here. I want, you know, I have, I have a parking lot. And I could have put five or six different, you know, roads next to each house and put all the cars all around the houses. And I did one lot. And it was, it was very difficult to do one big lot because it wasn't what, you know, what was, what was the rules. And so, I had to get waivers to not cut in parking, not cut in driveways. So, I would have, you know, if I had followed the rules, I would have had two more driveways out onto Fairgrounds and another driveway out onto Rugged Road. And it just didn't make any sense to me. So, I, so I, I hope, you know, I hope that we find a way to, you know, to not continue to do this myself. You know, not continue to put cars parked stacked in front of buildings. And I know it's not what we're talking about tonight. I understand that. So, anyway.
Yes, yes, of course.
So, it basically, it sounds like it's, that's, the request to remove it is going to pass. But I would like to see mitigation on this. And the tree's worth a lot. You know, that's, that's got a trunk like this. So, I think, you know, planting a couple of trees, you know, I think there should, you know, the town should be reimbursed in kind. $1,500 a caliper inch is probably what, you know, we're working on fines for what, you know, removal would be for a tree. So, say this, you know, it's a couple of trees are, you know, that's... What size are they going to be? What, you know, what's the size of the trees? You can say you're going to plant a tree, but, you know, I'd like to see big trees, big trees planted along you. But I think there's other compensation into the, into the town coffers for the, you know, for other tree planting around town. I mean, the elm that's on that property was, was part of a mitigation payment by the electric company to compensate for the loss of a plane tree where the switching building was. There was no other place to put that switching building. It had to be done that way. So, that, the compensation that, at that time, was $75,000 for, is a big tree. But at the time, this goes back to the 90s. But, you know, and I'm not, I'm not thinking maybe that much. But, but I think...
I think so. We're wide, you know, Dave's probably going to plant the trees. You know, I mean, it's like, I mean, he can pick the trees. But it's just that this tree, you know, it's like the house was there first. It's got to be the house before the tree. I mean, and the house is a home to people that count on it. So, as far as the mitigation goes, we've been wide open to whatever needs to happen. Absolutely. I just don't want this tree to make, to make our house uninhabitable. That's not really fair enough. And that's, that's where we're headed. You know, if you go look at that tree...
I think we understand. Mary Longanker, did you have another comment?
Yes, thank you, Don. A couple of other points. Hooper Farm Road has been a priority for the tree advisory committee for years to add trees for the public's benefit. There's also benefits to the homeowner for having trees on their property. So, I don't want to leave people with the impression that this tree is only bad. There are positive aspects to it continuing to exist. And the point that I try and make, I mean, the tree advisory committee does recommend removal of trees when it's appropriate for that tree to be removed. So, it's not that we're against removal of every single tree. But when you're removing 40-year-old trees, you're turning the clock back. You're never going to get 100-year-old trees if you remove 40-year-old trees. And those 100-year-old and 150-year-old trees are a big part of our historical record. They are part of the fabric of Nantucket. You know, I appreciate that there are difficulties with this tree. But you have to remember, at the time, as Dave described, it was cited appropriately. Nobody could foresee that we would allow tertiary dwellings on this lot 40 years later. You know, I don't think it's appropriate to say that this tree was a bad idea. I think it was a good idea. It has public benefit. You know, trees do grow. Things do happen. But, you know, Buzz saw, pointed out in his email, he thought he had a way to repair the sewer without harming the tree. Also, for the select board's point, the planning board required that any vegetation along the driveway be no higher than three feet, so it will not screen the cars very well. But there's a lot to consider here. I understand that there are issues that you need to weigh. And, you know, I can see which way you're going to go. But there are positives that I want to make sure are memorialized in this discussion. Thank you.
Brooke?
Don? Would it be possible for us to test the board to see whether there's... I mean, hearing what I'm hearing, it sounds as though the board is leaning toward allowing the removal of the tree. Can we make that approval contingent on the tree warden and the property owner coming back to us with a mitigation plan that's acceptable to the tree warden and the tree advisory committee? To make sure we're not make, I don't, I can't, I don't feel like I know enough to draft an appropriate mitigation plan. But I do want one that's appropriate in scale relative to the value of the tree.
Erica?
Back in 2022, when Carson Reinamo came to you for the property off of West Creek Road, you did approve a tree removal there with mitigation that had to be coordinated with the DPW and the tree arborist and the tree warden. So, maybe just follow along the lines. I don't know that it needs to come back to you, but as long as it's, the condition is they work with the town on what to replant.
I mean, that's, that's fine with me. The only thing I would note is that this is an employee housing property for a year-round small business. And I just don't want them to be overly burdened where they, you know, now have an issue providing housing. But I would, but I do want it to be a fair mitigation. So, I would say it can be worked out outside of here unless it needs to come back to us. Does somebody want to make a motion?
So, I'll move that we allow the removal of the tree subject to a mitigation plan. And if, and if the tree advisor and the warden cannot come to an agreement with the homeowner, that it might have to come back to us. But assuming they, they come to something agreeable, that would be fine.
Okay. And to somewhat follow what we set in 2022.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember if you would put a cap on that.
I think we had a certain caliber of trees that were required and...
I mean, if you want, I can go back and see what that was and...
Yeah, I think that you could provide that information to everybody involved. If they can't work it out, they come back to us. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, by rule call. Brooke Moore?
Aye.
Tom Dixon?
Aye.
Malcolm McNabb?
Aye.
Matt Fee?
Unabstain. I can't, I can't in good conscience put stack parking in front of this house. I know that is...
Well, that's not what we're being asked for.
It isn't, but I, you know, anyway.
Don Holgate, aye. So, that carries four to zero. And I mean, and part of what is causing the need for parking to end up in front yards is the way the zoning has been for many, many years because it gives a huge front yard setback, which kind of pushes parking into the front.
Yeah, but we should put, you could take those four and put those four right across the front and assign it to them. Half on ours and half on theirs. And it would look, you know, we, there's things we...
But that's against, that's against the planning board's rules.
But we could start designing these neighborhoods as neighborhoods and start, you know, instead of one at a time, chipping away. And we could be designing these as neighborhoods and then over time making them look nicer.
I don't disagree with you, but it's going to mean some significant changes to our zoning codes. Thank you all. We're going to move on to the next item. Thank you very much. Maybe you can work it out over golf. But anyway, next up, we have public hearings because number six and seven have been postponed until May 15th. So, I will open a public hearing to consider amending Chapter 316, Pedicab Regulations, including 316-1, allowing pedal-assisted bicycles, 316-2A, to allow for four pedicabs. including 316-1, allowing pedal-assisted bicycles, 316-2A, to allow for four pedicab licenses, 316-2P, allowing fees for pedicab services versus gratuity, 316-4A3, extending service area map.
I'm going to start this off for you.
Yeah, please.
So, a few weeks back, Mike Burns, the Transportation Program Manager, made a presentation to you outlining the review by three different boards, the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, I'm sorry, Traffic Safety Work Group, Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and then Nantucket Planning and Economic Development Commission. Some of the recommendations differed, I think mainly between Traffic Safety and BPAC, but they weren't that significant. That presentation is back in your packet. And overall, I think all of the recommendation, or all of the requests were recommended. I think that there was a question on the route, there was, or not a question, but there was a difference in the recommendation on the route. So, that's where we are now for you to make the final decision. And Michael Gormley is here from Nantucket Pedicab, if he wants to say anything.
Hi, thank you for having me on today's agenda. I really appreciate you including me on, yeah, good call, thank you. So, the, all the recommendations were largely, or majority of what I was requesting was largely recommended by BPAC, NPEDC, and Traffic Safety. The only disparity was across the Bartlett Farm Route. So, both, or all three boards approved the Cisco Brewery to the Cisco Brewery Satellite Parking Lot Route. And BPAC and NP, and EDC then went on to approve going all the way out to Bartlett Farm itself, while Traffic Safety did not approve that extension. So, that was the only real disparity amongst the recommendations.
Okay. And I want to note too, because this is amendments to the town regulations, there's specific language in the packet, you know, a definition of pedal-assisted bicycles, and some language change to 316-2P, allowing fees for pedicab service because currently it's only gratuity-based, and then amending the service area map to extend the area.
Do we have a fee schedule? Are we sending those later? Or are they sending them?
There isn't one yet. I don't know that there's been any discussion about the actual fees, but this would allow having a fee schedule?
So, that was one of the other, or I'm, is, am I allowed to speak?
Yes, please, go ahead.
That was the other, that was discussed, there wasn't really disparity, there was just, that was something that they, the boards agreed, required further discussion. My hope would be that a fee structure could be avoided as Nantucket is an amenity transportation service, similar to a limousine or the sleigh ride party bus, or something along those lines more so than a necessity such as a taxicab. So, I think that there should absolutely be some regulation along it where there must be a previously agreed upon price. BPAC suggested that the requirement be whatever the pricing structure for that day may be. It is then posted on the pedicabs so that there's full transparency and zero room for a customer to feel as if they've been taken advantage of, which I fully support. That being said, I just think the pricing will fluctuate from 2:00 PM till 10:00 PM, so massively in the same day, that it just doesn't make sense to have the same pricing structure. A lot of people are riding the pedicab because it's a whimsical experience, not because they're necessarily getting to work or need it in their day-to-day. So, I, I don't think it requires a structured, fair system.
Okay, I mean, I definitely agree with it needing to be clearly posted. I worry a little bit about, they charge some really exorbitant fees in New York City. And I would just, I don't want it to end up like that. I want it to be a little bit more in line with something where, yes, maybe you're paying a little bit of an upcharge for the experience, but you're not.
And I, I think New York City pedicabs are the worst thing that has happened to Nantucket, just because the reputation they've kind of set has been, I feel like I'm constantly battling that negative precedent. The massive difference between Nantucket and New York City is it's a small community here. So, I feel like if I step out of line a couple of times, it'll come back to bite me fairly immediately. While in New York City, I think their big customer bases, doors that are just constantly, it's a revolving door. But to that point, I'm, I'm fully on board with a clearly posted pricing structure that I would hopefully have the, or any pedicab owner would have the authority to change, although the price must be agreed upon prior to the ride, and the posting must be accurate with the current pricing that would be used.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
I'm okay with the pricing that way, and we can always re, we always can look at that again if we have any issues with it. The two items that I think we have to decide, one is which, which, what do we want to have as the requested service map? And I would recommend that we go with the Traffic Safety Blue Map because that keeps them off of, doesn't allow them onto Sparks or Quaker Road. So, I think that one makes sense. And then I think the, so I would recommend that. And then I would recommend the brewery, I would say, go all the way out to the road so that we can drop, they can drop people at the bus stop that's there. And I think that that road is, people should be driving slowly there anyway, and I think they should be able to turn around fairly safely and come back. So, I'm fine with them going out, so I'm saying the traffic, I'd say, take the BPAC recommendation for the Bartlett area and take the Traffic Safety for the other.
Erica?
And just to clarify, for Bartlett Farm Road, it, for both recommendations, it goes out to Homack Pond Road. It, just the difference is BPAC had it going out to the farm and not just between the brewery's parking lot and the end of the road, or the beginning of the road on, on Homack.
So, that's the one you want, going to the farm?
Yeah, from the farm all the way to the road, yeah.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this before we close the public hearing? Is there somebody online? Oh, Brooke?
Yeah, I, um. Yeah. The only question I have is, when we issue a new set of licenses for something like this, if another business wanted to have those licenses in the future, compete, or request additional licenses, what would be the process? Is there procurement process in the future? Or what happens if this takes hold and more than one business wants to engage in it?
I'm going to defer to Brian Turbit, the Finance Director, about procurement, but I will say that the current regulations state that it's up to the select board to assign a number of licenses, and up till now, they've assigned two. So, it seems as though it's in your purview. And then how other businesses can apply for them?
So, we're expanding to four, and then it would be up to us in the future potentially.
Yeah, we'd, my understanding, we'd be limited to four unless we made a change in the rules and regulations here, which we would have to have a public hearing to do, so.
Yeah. Can we close the public hearing?
And so, those.
Go ahead.
So, those licenses would be in the hands of Nantucket for a period of time or forever? I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to figure out.
We renew it yearly, correct?
I believe so, yes. And the NPEDC advocated to support an increase in the number of pedicab licenses for this year. And I think you could, it can always come back to the board if it seems like it was overwhelming for the town and four seems too many.
Matt?
I have a suggestion. I think this year was a trial. I think that Brooke brings up a good discussion, something we should be thinking about for the future. But I think that we could put it, you know, we could do what we have in front of us for this year and then have, ask staff to have a recommendation next year for how to allocate, et cetera. You know, do we want to put it to bid, or do we want to allocate it, or how do we want to do that? Have a, you know, what are the best practices and not get in a situation where we've got our, you know, we've got a system that's unfair or that's, you know? Okay.
Mary Longanker?
Thank you, Don. Mary Longanker speaking now as a member of the Nantucket Planning and Economic Development Commission. When we looked at this, the, the town bylaws do not specify a number of licenses. The bylaw doesn't say two licenses. It's my understanding the number of licenses granted is entirely up to the select board. So, I'm not sure that the statement that you'd need a public hearing to change the number of licenses is correct, but I certainly don't, I'm not the authority on that. But that was why the NPEDC's recommendation was simply to endorse an increase in the number of licenses, not to change the bylaw to specify the number of licenses, if that helps.
Thank you, Mary. Can we close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
All those in favor by roll call. Brooke Moore?
Aye.
Tom Dixon?
Aye.
Matt Fee?
Aye.
Malcolm McNabb?
Aye.
Don Holgate, aye. The public hearing is closed. What's the pleasure?
Move approval with the comments I made earlier.
With the routes?
Yeah, with the routes, yeah.
Okay. Is there a second?
Don?
Oh, yes.
Don, yeah, I'll second it with the addition of the posting, posting of the fares and that, that, that listing of fares needs to be submitted to the licensing department, and when it's changed, resubmitted, just so there's a public record of it.
I think the problem was that, that the fares will kind of change with demand at different times of day. So, are we wanting a schedule that says between, in the daytime hours, it's going to be X, in the nighttime hours, it's going to be Y? Or are we maybe just wanting to have the fares clearly posted and see if it, see how it goes if we get any complaints this year?
How about submit a range and for this, you know, a range for this year and then, because I think he's trying to probably figure it out, and then, you know, and then come back to us with how it goes.
Are you comfortable with a range?
I, I would be happy to.
Yes, that's fine.
You, you could submit a range. It will, it will be no less than this and no more than this.
I'm, my only concern is I, I just don't see the merit behind structuring pedicab pricing. I, I think it's as if any other business on island where I should price as I see best fit, and I, I don't want to be subject to regulation regarding that. I do think that the main concern regarding the pedicabs is that people aren't confused about the pricing and aren't charged more than they were anticipating. So, I think that problem would be entirely mitigated by posting the pricing from the get-go so that it's agreed upon beforehand. But I think to go a step beyond that and have a range of pricing goes a step too far as this is entirely an amenity transportation service.
Brooke, thoughts on that?
I'm, I'm sorry if there's delay here. This, it's, it's making this really awkward. My point isn't that it's regulated. My point is that there is a copy of it submitted to the town for people to be able to view. And if you change it, just submit a new version. I'm not saying it's subject to our approval. I'm saying there should be a record of it. If you're posting it in the pedicab, you have a version that's meant to be transparent to the rider. And all I'm asking is that you submit that to the town, just for the public record.
Erica?
So, just a question to Brooke. Are you anticipating that, that the town posts that somewhere? Because that is going to be burdensome on staff, and it will probably be inaccurate as the hours go by, and we don't have staff to say, you know, on hand to post something every, every hour or every two hours multiple times a week? Or on weekends?
Yeah. I guess I'm not really understanding how this, how this is go, how often it's going to change. I mean, I, anyway, I'll let it go. I'll leave it alone this time, and then if there's any disconnect between what's, what the riders expect if we have any issues.
Why don't we see how it goes this year?
As Madam Chair, as he said, it's a small town, and he'll hear if it doesn't go well. And so will we.
Yeah. Okay, so are we good with the motion as Matt stated it? Do you still want to second it, Brooke?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, all those in favor by roll call. Tom Dixon?
Aye.
Brooke Moore?
Aye.
Matt Fee?
Aye.
Malcolm McNabb? Don Holgate, aye. That carries unanimously. So, see how it goes for the season.
I just will note for Mr. Gorm, I'm sorry, can, can the speaking in the back?
Oh, excuse me, can you, if you need to talk, can you go out into the lobby?
So, the regulations still need to be advertised, that they've been changed and posted online, so this isn't immediate today. The soonest I can get it advertised is for next week. So, you are still on gratuity until the effective date, which I can make next Thursday.
Okay, sounds good, and thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. We, we should have included pedicabs to bring people from like the boys' club to town meetings. Maybe, maybe, maybe next year. I know. Next up, we have another public hearing to consider increasing town of Nantucket taxi rates and amending Chapters 367 Taxicabs Charter Limousine and Tour Vehicle Regulations, including 367-4 Prohibitive Practices, E Taxicab Operator Dress Code 3 and 4, 367-6 Violations and Penalties, A Fines, and introduce a minimum vehicle age for taxicabs, and to amend 367-2M Accessible Taxicabs.
So, you have, you have three proposals in front of you. You've got the rate increase, and then you've got the regulation changes by the taxi owner. And then you also have a regulation change from the Commission on Disability, so.
Go ahead, Stan.
Stan Pavlov, taxi owner, Ms. Holgate, dear board. In light of the rising cost of living and to keep up with inflation, we are suggesting taxi rates increase on average 16.89%, a little less than 17%. And a couple of changes, couple of changes to the taxi regulations, which will help us to improve things from a customer perspective.
The only one that I've gotten real extensive feedback on is the age of the taxicab. And I'd, I'd like to get a little background. I mean, there are some, you know, beautifully maintained older cars that, so I'm just wondering if there, there's a different solution there, like minimum standards of, and, and, you know, obviously inspection.
First of all, I'd like to apologize for the ambiguous wording. So, the idea is maximum age limit for the taxicabs. The goal is to ensure that visitors and locals have a safe and enjoyable experience when traveling in a taxicab. Setting a certain standard, which I hope it's reasonable, would just only enhance that. It's pretty obvious newer vehicles are more comfortable, safer, and more environmentally. are more comfortable, safer, and more environment friendly. It's a common practice in the country and in the world, typically it's anywhere between seven and 15 years. My personal opinion, it's, you know, it's not unreasonable if we set a 15 years limit to ensure that public and everybody got a great experience. Of course, people with older vehicles, they are posing to their idea, which I personally understand. I don't think it's an issue in the long run. Every, every taxicab owner, we're only going to benefit with a newer vehicle. Not only the public in general, but every taxicab owner as well.
Okay, thank you. I think that Mickey Roland is online wanting to speak about the disability section. Accessible taxicabs?
Yes. Hi, Mickey Roland. I'm the Chair of the Commission on Disability. And we're just proposing to amend the regulation that requires that the accessible taxicabs, and I believe there's four licenses that have been issued, or four, four that are available, the current regulation states that I believe that they have to be on the road or available 18 hours a day for 365 days a year. And there are only two licenses that are being used, maybe just one, but I think a second one is in the works. So our proposal is to like, to loosen up those regulations to basically just say that the accessible cab licenses need to be operated year-round. That's pretty loose and may need to be a little more defined than that. But our goal is to make it more desirable for the licenses to be used, to get more accessible cab licenses on the road. So we're, we're very open to suggestions from the board or the taxi community as to what those, what the verbiage on that should be. But I think it should just be loosened up to some degree to help enable more licenses. Thank you.
Okay. Maybe it gets loosened up to that and then we see what the response is before we tighten it up again.
Yeah, no, I think we loosen it to that and let the, hopefully we get four and hopefully the four will work with each other, kind of like the restaurants used to do, so there was always one available. You know, let them, you know, if someone's going on vacation, make sure the other people are covering. And then if we have issues where we get complaints that no one's available, again, then we have to do something about it.
Okay. Erica?
I was just going to note regarding the accessible taxis, it's been hard to fill them, from my understanding, in our dealing with interested individuals and current license holders in the town is, it's really hard to get the cars. And if something breaks, it's really hard to get them repaired. And so I know that that's been an issue where some people are off-road because their cars are broken down or the lift is broken, and then they're in violation of the regulations. So it's been, it's been difficult.
Okay. I have two hands up online. Billy Cassidy? Billy, you're muted. Okay, we'll, we'll come back. Mary Longanker?
Thank you, Don. Mary Longanker is speaking solely as a member of the public at this point. I noticed that on the list of taxi operators that is included in the packet, the two accessible taxis, one is a 2011 and the other is a 2004. My suggestion would be that because these are specialized vehicles and that they serve a need that is hard to replicate with anything else, that you exempt them from any age restrictions on the vehicles if you choose to adopt age restrictions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Billy Cassidy? Let's try that again. You're muted.
Billy, you've got to unmute.
Erica?
While you're waiting to see if he picks up, I'd like to say a comment as a, I guess a private individual whose family member used to run taxicabs here. It would be awesome if everyone can have brand-new vehicles all the time, but it's not always feasible. I mean, running a taxi in Nantucket is expensive, especially if you have somebody driving for you, because if you have employees, you have to have workman's comp, you have to pay the town for a license, you have to pay the taxi, the airport for a license. It's not cheap. And if you have a well-maintained vehicle that passes inspection and is in good shape, I don't, I don't know that they should be penalized and have to purchase a new vehicle.
Okay, Billy, one more time. You're still muted. Okay. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in the audience? Oh, Billy, can you hear me now? No, he's still muted.
Don?
There you are. Yep, go ahead.
Pardon me, I walked out of the room. I just saw that somebody wanted me to speak about something.
Your hand has been up.
If my hand was up, I apologize and I will, I am so sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
My name's Patrick Nolan. As the owner-operator of Patrick's Taxi, I would like to make a few comments on the proposed vehicle age limit. My current taxi is a 2010 Jeep Commander. It has less than 60,000 miles on the odometer. It does not have a single dent on it. The exterior and interior are in pristine condition. It's a solid vehicle and has no mechanical issues. When it needs service, I have it completed as quickly as possible. As with most taxi owners, I take pride in my personal and my vehicle appearance to the public we serve. I disagree strongly with a mandatory age requirement for a vehicle, and it goes against the global, the current global push to reduce, reuse, and recycle. I also feel that addressing an issue that does not need to be fixed in this manner. I have heard the argument that other countries and even states and cities have these ordinances. We're the United States. As a retired 20-year Navy veteran, I take that seriously. We are not another third-world country. And as far as other states and cities go, not all have our state's mandatory annual safety inspections. Annual safety inspections in Massachusetts have additional requirements that are specific to the taxi business already. The taxi business is already difficult to survive in with rideshare apps and the needed rules and regulations in existence. We do not need to add this burden to the process. And in conclusion, in the words of Ronald Reagan, government's first duty is to protect the people, not run their lives. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Andy Reese, I own Andy's Taxi. And I just want to say I oppose the, the age limit on the, on the cab. I have a, I have a beautiful cab that people love to drive in. It has 55,000, a little less than 55,000 miles on it. Probably could go another three or four years. For me to have to afford, to, to, I couldn't afford to buy a car even in that 10 to 15-year range, which would only allow me a few years if this goes through. I, I hope that you, I hope that you accept the rate increase because I think it's needed. And, and I repeat that, you know, the taxi industry is heavy-regulated, unlike pedicabs, restaurant, you know, as far as pricing is concerned. And so, yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
In regards to 367.6?
Oh, could you just say your name? Sorry.
That was the next line. Hello, my name is, I had it all written down. My name is Dora Lee Nolan. I waited 16 years for my taxi license. I've had my taxi license for nine years. I'm on my third taxi, which happens to be a new one last year. I had older ones that were good, but it was their time. But I come before you to voice my disapproval for the age limit proposed on taxicabs. I had an email suggesting taxi price hikes. To my surprise, there was taxi rate hikes proposal. There was not proposal of taxi age limits in the letters and fines issued for inappropriate attire. How one person can bring this before the select board without the written knowledge and consent of taxi owners was a shock. Not everyone can afford to replace their taxis every few years. As a cost of cars, the cost of insurance for having newer cars is not cost-effective. For all taxis be less than the proposed 10 to 15 years old. Some of the older taxis look good and are in good working order and are sturdier than the newer ones. The older vehicles are built with more metal and less plastic. Mine is new and it's pretty plasticky. When it snows or I go down muddy roads, I grab my husband's car. He has a Jeep Commander. Having said persons compare our taxis to that of another country into Uber and has forgotten that we are taxis. Taxis in Boston, Hyannis, do not have this stipulation. They are much bigger in landmass than Nantucket. Most taxis on Nantucket are in good working order and they're kept maintained and annual inspections. You will see fewer scratches and dents on the said older vehicles. If by chance, one of us hits the many deer on this island or something happens to our taxi, the funds are not readily available to replace with a newer car. Yet something we can afford that is nice-looking to find something used. Our vehicles go through yearly inspections so they are safe and fit to drive. We are subject to inspections of our vehicles and are logged by the police department and by the CSOs at any time. One person should not control what the other taxi owners want with our first meeting and have a diplomatic discussion. This would put several taxis out of business. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I mean, like I said, that, that's really the only thing that I have heard comments on. And I mean, I struggle with it because in Massachusetts, as was noted, all vehicles are required to pass inspection. In Florida, you don't have to get your vehicle inspected. So it's an entirely different animal. And I'm, I drive a car that's nine years old. And that would mean that I would have to give it up next year. And it's in perfectly good condition. So I'm just, that's the one that I'm struggling with. We are still, have a public hearing open. Do we want to close the public hearing at this point? Does anyone else wish to speak before we do?
I was going to tease you about a nine-year-old car, but I'll close the hearing instead.
Okay. Is there a second?
I just moved to close the hearing.
Or I think Matt, they kind of both made the motion, but okay. All those in favor, by roll call. Brooke Moore?
Aye.
Tom Dixon?
Aye.
Matt Fee?
Aye.
Malcolm McNabb?
Aye.
Don Holgate, aye.
Do you want to take the, like, the rates separate from the regulations?
I mean, frankly, I'm ready to pass everything except the age.
Okay.
As Madam Chair, I can't support the age.
Madam Chair? Are we the two parking spots? Are we doing that as well? No?
That is not part of this.
Okay.
Sorry, that was, that still, that needed to go to traffic safety. They didn't meet last month. So that's still under review. So that's not part of this.
Come back to us. Okay.
Any other comments from anyone?
I'll make a motion that we-
Go ahead.
That we support all aspects except for the age and that, that's it. Second.
Okay. All those in favor, by roll call. Tom Dixon?
Aye.
Brooke Moore?
Aye.
Matt Fee?
Aye.
Malcolm McNabb?
Aye.
Don Holgate, aye. That carries unanimously. Thank you.
And I'll just note again that because it's a regulation change, it needs to be advertised.
Next Thursday.
So probably next Thursday. The rates, when, when do you want the rates to go into effect? Same day?
I think that, that's fine. Next Thursday, yeah, as soon as it's ready.
Or do you want it like Friday? This Friday? I mean, the rates are a little different because they don't have to be-
I think you should do, I think you should do same day.
Okay.
I think it should be consistent.
Great.
And then that gives everyone time to reprint and post their new rates. Okay, next up, we have nothing on the town managers' reports. We have select board reports and comments, review, discussion of proposed draft timeline for the fall special town meeting. Yeah, put it up on the screen. Rick, did you have any comments on it or? Okay.
So I think this is just an opportunity for you to, to look at this timeline, the proposed timeline. And I believe Brooke pointed out that you are, it's scheduled to be adopted, sorry, adopted at your next meeting. So this is just to get a, a look at it. And if you have any comments or questions or issues.
Don?
Yep, go ahead, Brooke.
I'd like to, to make a comment about the, 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 one of the reasons for scheduling this special town meeting, I think, is with the expectation that there will, there will be further business with regard to short-term rentals after annual town meeting and to signal to the community that we're prepared to continue that conversation as necessary in a fall meeting. And I would like to comment on the community's right to call an additional special town meeting sooner than this. And I would just like to ask the community to consider the use of administrative resources to do so when we're planning to have this meeting in September. If, if citizens were to submit and request a special town meeting, we would be obligated to have it within 45 days of the submission of the signature or the, the certification of those signatures. And it really would mean we would be having a, a special town meeting in the summer while town administration is planning, is spending time and, and all the boards and committees are spending time preparing for a September town meeting according to the schedule. So I just wanted to put that out there and say we recognize there's further conversation and that's one of the reasons I'm in favor of having a, a special town meeting in the fall.
Erica?
In that vein, I'd also like to let the community or remind the community that this is a presidential election year. The town clerk's office is going to be overly burdened with various election events, including primaries, early voting, mail-in voting, and that's going to take a lot of their time and effort.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I just feel like we should recognize that earlier tonight under public comment, it was stated that there are signatures being gathered to call a special. And I don't know exactly what that means in terms of timing, but I, I am concerned about having two special town meetings. And I know we are limited in terms of the DPW facilities that we wanted to put on the STM. I don't think that, that won't be ready if we had to call a meeting in June. So I'm not, I think we need to get a handle on that, but we're not going to officially call this until May 15th. Matt?
Yeah, a couple of points. First one, now I'm losing my thought. Well, one is, charity is still here, so we could ask, you know, sort of what is the goal? What, you know, what are their plan? My, I kind of think this is premature. I think if 59 passes, it really doesn't, we're done. And so I don't see a need to, you know, talk about other stuff in the fall because it, we will, we will have, you know, we have, we'll have made it legal anywhere on the island and for, you know, any amount. And it'll be hard to come back from a zoning choice that does that. So I, I think that, you know, what, how we might deal with in the future may change. And I don't know that we'd have time to hit this timeline if it passes. If it doesn't pass, I do think that then it would make sense to do something soon and assure people about it, you know, because there are a lot of things that are floating around now. And I'd hope that John Giorgio was here tonight because there's a lot of questions.
Brian Riley is on.
Oh, well, maybe, so maybe I can ask them.
But, but I just, I did want to note that I don't think the conversation is over. But, but I just, I, I did want to note that I don't think that conversation is over if 59 passes. I think that then general bylaw guardrails, further general bylaw guardrails could be put in place. And I would assume that there would be proposals in that regard.
Right.
For an STM. And if it doesn't pass, then we certainly need to figure something out. But it, but if it does, then there's an easier passage of a general bylaw by a 50% vote to put some restrictions in place as different things that have been proposed.
Right, but we, we could go down that rabbit hole again. There's a lot of misinformation, I think, that's out there, you know, sort of one, there's a couple of threads that I would like answered. You know, one of the, one of the things I'm reading is all the rentals, you know, all types of rentals are not legal. You know, I think that that's not true. And if we don't approve 59, rentals will no longer be legal on Nantucket. That's another one that's, you know, and I read some of the people that are writing in the newspaper as though, you know, that is the proposal. If we don't vote 59, there'll be no rentals ever more on Nantucket. I think that there's been a lot of misinformation. And before we have the discussion at town meeting, I think people need to have the truth laid out to them. I, because I think it's not clear to the public right now. And I think you just read some of those letters and I just cringe, you know, at the understanding or lack of understanding of what the impacts will be, so.
Don?
Oh, Brooke, Charity's coming up to the mic, but go, go ahead.
Okay, I just, I want to follow up on what you said and respectfully disagree with what Matt said, that if 59 passes, that we're done. That is definitely not the case. And I think that is also a narrative that I'm a little worried about. And I do think that we will know more on the 8th or 9th, whenever town meeting is done, as to what happens with Article 59 specifically and Article 60 in the general bylaw. And this conversation will not be done on May 7th or 8th, in my mind. And, and I agree with Matt that the narratives out there are quite hyperbolic and, and fear inducing and that the reality, in, in my opinion, is that the world does not end either way after the outcome of Article 59, regardless of some arguments in the community, one way or the other, that if it passes, it's the end of the world. If it doesn't pass, it's the end of the world. We will have a new conversation or we will be continuing the same conversation depending on the outcome of Article 59. So I agree. I verbally, it's not helpful to the community. I just don't know what we can do as a board to counteract that, you know, the people have the right to speech. But I do encourage the community to be careful about the claims that are being made that are, again, to use the word hyperbolic on both sides, ends of the spectrum.
Can I go to Charity?
Yeah, please.
Yesterday, I wrote an email to Jason Grauzi about why we are doing what we're doing. Happy to forward it to all of you. Our intent is not to cause distress to the administrative resources of the island. Not at all. Our intent is to be ready, depending on the outcome of annual town meeting, to make a decision about what we think should be done about the crisis in short-term rentals. Now, we have an article that we're very happy about. We like it. And we, as we are going around talking to people about what we think should happen at annual town meeting, we're simultaneously going ahead and getting signatures. They may go nowhere, but we will have hundreds. And that's what we want you to know. We're just preparing. You have, you have a schedule up there of opening the warrant on May 15th and closing in on May 30th. And we want to be ready.
Okay, that, that's fair. I think that's the answer.
Do you have any idea on, on timing of when you want to submit? That's the, do you think?
No.
No, you, you're going to keep that open? Okay.
We want to see what happens in the community.
Okay.
But be ready in case something is needed.
Okay. But it may, may be able to align with September 17.
I beg your pardon?
It may be able to align, align with September. It might be able to align with September 17th, but.
Yes, I mean, we don't know. There could be amendments on the floor. There could be anything that happens.
Okay, so, so your timeline is make a decision post-town meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay, but that's exactly what I wanted to know.
See, Madam Chair, I actually support that concept because I don't think we really know what's going to come out of town meeting. And we may have to be able to react very, very quickly. Whatever your opinion is what should happen, one way or the other. So some of the people, it may be in favor of, for example, of 59. And if it passes or not pass, may actually want, based on other amendments, may want something soon. So I, I understand the difficulty of resources. But I think this is a high priority issue. And we should be prepared to have a special town meeting as soon as possible. Maybe, maybe God will be with us and after town meeting, everyone will be happy with what hap, what happens. I doubt it.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah.
My point wasn't.
Not everyone's going to be happy no matter what.
Yeah, well, my point wasn't to be hyperbolic. My point, and the reason, when I said it was over, my point is that once you change zoning and put a Y on the east chart, it's very hard to change it back. And I asked John Giorgio, you know, previously, you know, can you guarantee we can change this back and everything will go back? And he wouldn't answer that. He couldn't answer that because you can't. And so it's very difficult. And so that's my concern, is I think there is an in-between. And I think the short-term rental work group, we're really close to it last year. And if it hadn't been monkeyed around with, I think we would have, you know, at FinCom level, we would be probably out of this thing right now. And so I'm just, that was what I meant by that. And so I, and I think it's, we have to sort of have clarity for people to know, you know, there's a lot of people scared that, oh my God, I'm going to lose my chance to, to rent at all. And I don't think that that's true. You know, the other thing that we can't predict is what's going to happen with zoning and/or what other, what people that we don't control are going to do. You know, so there are a couple, other than just town meeting, there's other things that may impact us in wanting to, needing to move quicker or needing to move in a different direction, which we can't even predict. So that's what I meant.
Kristy Ferentzela?
Hi. And just reviewing that timeline, it looks like the select board would adopt the warrant in June. And as I, I'd mentioned earlier, the option to opt-in to a local option real estate through Governor Haley's Affordable Homes Act wouldn't be available till the end of July. And so that would just prevent us from being able to include that on a special town meeting warrant. So I don't know if there's any adjustments in the schedule.
Yeah, I would think we could do a placeholder for it.
Okay. Thank you.
Charity Vance?
I just wanted to ask one more question and follow up to the, the flurry of information that is being circulated in the community in terms of the validity and the interpretations and so forth. One that I heard this afternoon that is somewhat troublesome to me in view of what happened in 2021 is that there is discussion about moving Article 59 and 60 forward in the warrant to 1 and 2. And I'm very concerned that one of the problems we had in 2021 is the people who expected to come to annual town meeting for Article 90, all of a sudden found it moved perhaps an hour or more forward in the schedule and present, you know, essentially prevented people who planned to come a little later from voting. And I think it would be terribly disrespectful to the community and to everybody who attends annual town meeting to make some kind of change like that at the last minute and once again repeat that disservice to the community.
I, I will say that my advice to everyone is that on the first night, you want to be there at the beginning to see what the, how it all lays out.
Because someone can motion and change it.
Yeah, people, it, it's not up to us. Anyone can make a motion to make, to change things around and to call different things and.
Okay, if that's the case, I think it's very important that the community be advised that that is a possibility and it should be done immediately.
Yeah, I hadn't heard that. I hadn't heard that rumor, but that's, could be troubling.
Anyone could make a motion to move anything around. And that's why you really want to be there for that first hour where everything gets laid out. And then you can, you can come and go. People have been asking me just about like sort of rules of town meeting and, Brooke?
Just want to reiterate my concern that a call for a special town meeting right after town meeting, I have asked town council about this and been advised that we are required to hold the town meeting within 45 days. So I wonder of the value of a special town meeting where the timeline for people to learn what is being offered at that town meeting, is that short? And so I just want to make that comment. And, and just please encourage the community to hang in and utilize the town, you know, the town meeting process for this proposed special town meeting in the fall where there will be committee hearings and all the things that, that are required by our charter in order for there to be a transparent process of setting and evaluating the warrant versus a rush to a date that might feel like we're getting to a solution quicker, but may actually confuse people more and lead us nowhere and then have just wasted resources.
Thank you, Brooke. Tom?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I, I agree. And I think that regardless, if you set aside for a second the validity of 59 and what everybody thinks about it, primary accessory, if it goes down, you, we're still going to, meaning Nantucket is still going to need two-thirds to pass anything in zoning. And this timeline on the special that's, that's in our packet for September 17th and the deadlines for citizen warrant articles, FinCom, planning board, et cetera, et cetera, are very tight as it is. This is as early, I think, as it possibly could be done. Plus with folks traveling in the summer and having family and kids out of school, I would, I'm worried about two things, which is people having a chance to digest what anybody ever comes up with to present, especially if it's, if it's an accessory version, which has been difficult to say the least for, for somebody to come up with something that I think, or that, that could get to, that could get two-thirds. And, and also that, just, just the fact that it, it's also going to put serious pressure on folks to be able to show up at a town meeting and have that representative a vote on the community. And I don't think with something that we've, meaning Nantucket, has spent this long on that should be passed in the middle of the summer with 134 people there trying to get two-thirds, that, this needs a broad-based vote. Nantucket needs to agree on whatever the definition in zoning that can get two-thirds. And that's ultimately how we move forward. I also, just, just as an aside, the short-term rental work group, of course, decided to do the, put the yes in the columns and then, and then regulate in general bylaw. The short-term rental enabling statute for the state gives us, meaning our form of legislative body, open town meeting, a pretty wide latitude for what we can and can't do. And I think that even if 59 passes, there is a range of things we could do, some of which the short-term rental broker came up with, which was limit the number of weeks. And you could also limit licenses. I'm not suggesting any of that, I'm just saying that is possible. But I, I think that this timeline on September 17th is as tight as we could possibly do it for all reasonableness.
Thank you. Kathy Baird, did you still want to speak? You took your hands down, but Kathy, go ahead.
Thank you so much. I was just going to say pretty much what, what Tom, Tom just, Tom Dixon just said. But I saw, I think that the, the short-term rental work group put forth a zoning bylaw that's very similar to 59, which says you're not legal unless you, you know, you check the boxes, but you're not legal unless you follow all the rules, which are in the general bylaw. So to me, the dialogue is not over, even if, if 59 passes, it's, it's, you're able to then add whenever regulations that are set up by the state in the general bylaw to restrict, you could cap, you can do any number of things. So it's, it's perhaps, you know, what happened at town meeting last, in special town meeting perhaps, was that the negotiated agreements we all had, everyone on the short-term rental work group, nobody loved everything in there. Everybody compromised on what was in there and said, this is my line in the sand. I have to have this or I can't vote yes. And then someone else had something else. So we all basically pulled together and got the yes. I'm wondering if maybe the items that were in that bylaw that we put, put forward, that general bylaw, if they had been à la carte, where, where voters could vote on each one of them, it might have been, it might have been more helpful because people would have picked which ones they liked and which ones they didn't. And then we could have moved forward. The hard part, I think, is with, with the fact that it's so ambiguous now in our zoning and the zoning board can't really do anything other than to reinterpret what is already in the law, they can't change it. That ambiguity has really been hard for people. So I think that's where the confusion is. So we, we can have a much better dialogue, I think, if, if we have some protective zoning now. We don't have guns to our heads and we can move forward and, and regulate however the town chooses to do with the majority.
Thank you, thank you, Kathy. Tucker, were you wanting to speak?
Yes, sorry. Well, Tucker Holland, Kristy had just asked me to speak a little bit about the transfer fee legislation. So I, if, if a placeholder can end up, you know, being the ant.
Yeah, it sounds like it, the opt-in comes before the September 17th date, so I don't see why we couldn't add it to the warrant.
I think we just want to, I think at the very soonest that this legislation will pass is July 31st, actually August 1st at like 2:00 in the morning. And then there is getting to the governor's desk. And then there's also a period for which, in which it then takes time to enact. So we just want to coordinate with Senator Sears' office and others to understand at what date can we then opt in? Not that it drives, and special town meeting is, but it's, it's an important thing.
Okay. Okay, so we will take this up again on the 15th in terms of absolutely finalizing these dates. Are there any committee reports? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor, by roll call. Brooke Moore?
Aye.
Thanks, Brooke. Good night. Tom Dixon?
Aye.
Matt Fee? Malcolm McNabb? Don Holgate? Aye. Carrie's unanimously. Thank you very much.